I'm going to call the Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty five. Meeting of the Easton Metal Planning Board to order. Required to ask, there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom who might be recording this meeting? Please so please state your name and the method you're recording. I'll ask again, is there anyone in the audience on Zoom who might be recording this meeting? Please state your name and the method in which you're recording. None. We'll take the whole of the meeting, starting with Mr. Punderson.
Pete Punderson here.
Bill Fonseca.
Russell Denver.
Mr. Chair Swallow.
Rob Thoreau.
And we're joined by.
Rob Wachilla.
Planning Director.
Director of Plan.
Thank you. Approval of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion hearing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And I am abstaining. We I'll take a motion to take out of order item five under new business.
The most.
Have a second.
And we'll keep going.
Any discussion hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the first order of business being number five?
Sure. Uh, new business A N R dash two thousand twenty four dash eleven requests to endorse plan of plant plan of land reconveying shared lot lines of two parcels at thirty Main Street owner John owned owned by John A Pacano and two Redstone Drive owned by Carolyn M Price applicant Hunter Chaplane, three oh one Mountain Road, Oberham, Mass. zero one zero nine five.
The applicant here. Go ahead and step forward.
Dan O'Brien, Smith Associates Surveyors.
Welcome everyone.
Rock the plan.
But we have the plans in front of us, you might just want to kind of.
We can read them all now.
Yeah, that's true.
I can put up on the screen too, so.
Okay. Why you do that? Hey, I'll let you know it.
So, um. The the owner at thirty Maynard was looking to put an addition on the house to facilitate a um, an additional living space uh for. I don't I don't know all the details, but uh. In order to get the size addition that they wanted, they were getting a little too close to the property line, so they approached butter at two yeah Redstone to see if they'd be willing to do a land swap and reconfigure that property line to allow for a little greater setback on that side, and that's what we're proposing here. So there's two parcels to be exchanged, equal square footage will be no changes to the square footage of either parcel, no change, no changes to the frontage. Um, everything uh meets setback requirements and seems from my side of the fence here, it looks pretty straightforward.
Any concerns from the planning department?
No, it's actually our idea to suggest they go down this route because they uh they go down the variance route at first.
The wind might.
It seemed like the better option.
Good. Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion to endorse the plan?
So moved.
One second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This matter passes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Clerk. Item four.
Hearings case Z N dash two thousand twenty four dash zero five for the addition of subsections four fifty dash five point eleven accessory dwelling units ADUs uh to the Eastlaw Meadow zoning by law and for the amendments of subsection four fifty dash three point three additional use dimensional and density regulations subsection four fifty dash nine point three projects requiring site plan review subsection fifty dash eleven point two terms defined table three dash one schedule of use regulations and table three dash two table of dimensional regulations of the Eastlaw Meadow zoning beginning from December third, two thousand twenty four.
So uh before we kind of get into a little bit, so Rob, why don't you just kind of fill us in and let people know. You know, a quick synopsis of what this is, why we're acting on this matter and the current status and what we need, the type of timelines we need to fulfill.
Sure, yeah, so um uh we are proposing a um update to the zoning bylaws and we're actually including a section on where called accessory dwelling units known as ADUs for short. Essentially, they're like um an additional living um units on a property. Usually you'd see these in like converted garages, sheds, or just new construction. They can also be in addition to an existing single family home, or they can be contained within the um existing home entirely. Uh essentially, the term accessory refers to it being smaller in size than the primary structure, which is usually the single family home, the main house. So the governor signed back in August, a law called the Affordable Homes Act. One of many provisions included this ADU um being allowed by right, which means it doesn't need any, it can't be denied by the planning board in any town throughout the state. So as a result of that law passing, which goes into effect on February second of this year, um the planning board and the planning department have been working on language to not only curb the boom of development that might result from this law change, but to do it in a way that's appropriate for the town of Eastlaw Meadow. Um, one of which includes allowing them by site plan review, uh which means the planning board would look over the plans for any and all ADUs and then offer their criticisms and feedback and then essentially would have to comply with the law and allow them by right. So we did um have our first hearing on this back on, believe it was December fourth, Mr. Chair, if it says that on the agenda. Um, and there have been a few changes since, but they're very minor. Um, so everything you see here um in blue with the underline, if you're looking at the screen, these are new uh the language are being added to the actual existing text. Anything that's red with a line through it, it's pretty self explanatory, we're taking that out. So I just want to go back and go down to the um parts that have been changed since the previous meeting. So right here, as you can see, anything that's highlighted, those are new changes that have been implemented since the last public hearing on this matter. Um, so for example, the planning board wanted to take out most of this first paragraph and shorten it to read this bylaw addresses the necessary permitting path and design requirements for accessory dwelling units known as ADUs in order to cite these buildings in appropriate manner for the community. So the timeline that we have for this is to hopefully meet that February second deadline. Looks like we're going to do that. Um, right now, this is our second public hearing before the planning board. The town council has their public hearing on January fourteenth, which is next Tuesday. Um, don't know how long that's going to take, but we are going to be close to meeting our goal of getting this thing passed by February second. And just to continue to show the minor changes that have occurred since the last hearing, just going to scroll through. So right here, um, this section pertains to detach accessory dwelling units. Essentially, those are the separate buildings that you would have, so say like an old garage, barn, or just a new building that you construct. It's separated from the main building, that's why it's referred to as detached. So we did make an edit here in section C. So the text used to read that the ADU would have to abide by the same setback requirements for any accessory structure. So for example, like a garage or a barn, we have to be an additional ten feet back from the road than the main building. In this case, we are conforming to draft regulations that were released by the state about a month ago, in which they dictate that the town cannot be more restrictive in citing these accessory dwelling units than you would for a single family home. So because of this, we had to modify the language here to reflect that. So instead of having the additional ten foot further back requirement, we have to allow for them to abide by the same setbacks as the main building itself. So the text has been altered to say detached ADU shall observe the same front yard setback as the primary dwelling. And the reason why I took out side yard and rear yard here is because the main building and accessory buildings already abide by the same rear and side setbacks. It's just the front one that's different for both. And also, there's an exception where if a garage or shed is ten feet behind the main building, they're allowed to be five feet away from the property line on the sides and the rear. ADUs are not allowed to do that. They still have to be the same distance back as the main building itself. So the whole point is we're trying to have uniformity here while also complying with what the state's telling us we're allowed to do. So that was the biggest reason for this change right here um on this section. And you know, we'll take questions at the end, I'm just going to go through the rest of the changes very quickly. There isn't much else. Um. The only other thing that I'm aware of was that was also included in the new regulations that were um given to us by the state is this definition here for what's referred to as gross floor area, GFA. So this definition here um expands upon the definition we used to have. So the definition we used to have read, the aggregate of the floor areas of all stories of a building or structure other than attic or cellar excluding the floor areas of any private garage. So under the state's definition, which fell into the same regulations that governed the last change I made, um includes all those attics and basement structures. It it looks at the total square footage of every floor in the building. So you're looking at the whole building's gross floor area when calculating how big you're allowed to have for an ADU. So I'm just going to read the whole thing here so people can understand what this definition comes from. So gross floor area is the sum of the areas of all floors of the building, including basements, cellars, mezzanine, and intermediate floor tiers and penthouses of headroom height measured from the exterior faces of exterior walls or from the center line of walls separating buildings, but excluding covered walkways, open roofed over areas, porches and similar spaces, and pipe trenches, exterior terraces or steps, chimneys, roof overhangs, and similar features. So essentially, they're measuring all habitable areas, and that's what the definition is describing to us. So that's pretty much all the changes there. Um, Chair, I don't know if you want to open up for questions or what the board wants to do here.
So we're just trying to be as proactive as possible to kind of uh get this issue out there and pass in time for state requirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
I like how this planning board can be very proactive, much like when we put the issue of drones before the town council and uh you know, the issue of drones that went all the way up to President Biden.
Yeah.
But you know, just apparently just I thought they're just concerns of a few individuals, but uh. So this is a continuation of a public hearing. So uh, anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward.
Get the Bible.
Here we go.
Thank you very much, Ralph Page.
Before you get going, I also just want, I also want to just remind members of the public, this does include members of the town council, that we too hear issues from residents. And so when we raise issues in front of the planning board, it's not necessarily a few of us that might have concerns hear things, we bring it to this board, we submit it to the town council, so it's not just a few people who have concerns about appearances. It's we've heard from other people, much like people have told me they've heard from countless people about the building, uh Chase Bank.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from anybody.
I have.
I've heard a few.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I've heard a word.
So just let people know. Can I stage? Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Point well taken on the drones.
Mm hmm.
Our government can't handle it, our town can, but that's okay. Um, so I appreciate the continuance of this public hearing from the December fourth meeting. Um, it gave me an extended amount of time to look through the ADU bylaw, including uh seven sixty CMR seventy one, which currently are proposed uh regulations, they're actually in the public comment section uh taken until January tenth, which I've submitted multiple different comments to them with regards to some adjustments. Um, but in front of you, um, I created twelve areas in here that I just wanted to go through real quick, and I'm basing a lot of this off of the seven sixty CMR um information that I recently printed out, which is their last and most current. Um, so I'm going to just start right in at the top uh under section uh four fifty five eleven C one. Um. Accessibility of ADUs. Um, I just wanted to point out that under seven sixty CMR, um, it talks about residential dwellings within residential dwelling districts. Well, their definition of a residential dwelling district is any district which allows by right a residential dwelling. Currently in our bylaw, uh, under three point two, I think it is table three two, we allow by right residential dwellings in all districts except industrial and industrial garden park. So if we go with their recommendation, I think what we need to do is look at um the table later on and change the noes because currently it's only um double A, A, B, and C that we're allowing it in, and we have to change the others with the exception of industrial and industrial garden park to yes. Or we have to think to go into our bylaw and say residential housing is not allowed in those districts if that's the way you choose to go. Or we have to convince the state that their definition's incorrect.
Good luck with that.
But I just wanted, like I said, these are issues I wanted to point out.
It's a good one that you brought up, I I appreciate it. So I'm just going to just go to Rob for a second. So. Had a lot of dealings with this, Rob. So. Do you believe, and I'm just asking your opinion, that the state would find this overly burdensome if we restricted ADUs in certain districts that we now allow residential housing in?
Yes and no, because it depends on how many single family homes exist in those districts.
Right.
So you could have a single family housing allowed by right in the business district, but do we have many of those in that district? We might have some, also might have some that have been there before the zoning even changed. So I don't see that as a big issue, and neither did our town attorney when they reviewed the bylaw. They didn't really make that a concern, but it's up to the board if you really wanted that to be reflected.
Yeah, so I mean, we're trying to do this in a very respectful and aesthetic pleasing manner. I I don't know if we want to be putting accessory dwelling units.
Anywhere.
Yeah, well.
So I guess one of my concerns.
Well, I let me go back before, it's my train of thought, thank you, Pete. Uh.
Also, I think.
And the other districts.
Yeah.
And the other districts.
Yeah. I I residents A, residents B, you know, C, I get it, I get all that.
I do have one uh thing to point out about this definition of this. I mean, the state kind of does make it seem very vague.
Hmm.
Their definition, I mean, if a single family home is allowed by right in the commercial district, does that make it a residential district now? A single family residential district? It doesn't.
No.
And I think that definition by itself just seems very broad, so it can easily fit in to different districts that might traditionally be commercial. Um, I I think the justification for doing it just in the residence double A to C is because those are primarily the single family residential districts we have in town.
Hmm.
So it made the most sense just to limit it to those districts. The other ones are more for non residential purposes.
What do you think the state will say to that, though?
I don't think the state would make a big deal about it unless uh because those other districts are not residential districts.
They're not primarily residential.
Yeah.
So we are essentially saying we want to just limit accessory dwelling units to those probably.
Which reminds, you know, just a big reminder, that's more than seventy five percent of our town.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not like we're making it restrictive.
Okay.
Uh, those areas are pretty large, especially rez A, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we have a house in a, let's say, a business district that wants to put an ADU on, um, are we going to have a process through the ZBA to allow that?
It would be a variance.
No. It depends, you can make the argument that's a special permit for a preexisting nonconforming use and that you're altering it by adding an ADU.
But it's not preexisting nonconforming use because it's a residential use in an allowed zone with residential.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't fall under that. The ADU, according to the state, you can't put under special permit. And I'm just, again, I'm not expecting to have all these answers tonight. I just, these are things that I wanted to bring up to the board, and again, I don't think any bylaw, no matter how much you put into it, is perfect. There's always going to be little bits here and there that this house doesn't really conform or something, and um these are just points that I brought up.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
To let you, you know, simmer, think about, and if you want to adjust, you can. If you don't understand and.
Yeah. So I do like the, I personally.
Um, I'm all shields, but I like the concept of limiting it to quote residence A, B, you know, not accessory dwelling units. Rob, you look like you're thinking that one over, so.
Yeah.
I could see the smoke.
And if if a if a structure was um.
Yeah. But if it's an overlay, we that's something we could potentially add when you create that district.
Yeah. Russ? But a a structure that's preexisting nonconforming can't be made more nonconforming anyway.
Well, actually, that's something that was one of the comments to the state, and the state seems to say, well, now because we have these two in the same portion of the law.
That our bylaws state that.
Uh, well, just because our bylaws do, you can't be more restrictive than the state and with the state preexisting nonconforming, because one of my questions was, are you going to need a section six finding? Um, but again, I think that's more down the road. I think those are going to be very few uh issues. Um, there's a limited number of preexisting nonconforming residential dwellings, mine and yours.
Um, this is going to be an interesting discussion. We have four, three former chairs of the planning board and myself, I think I'm outnumbered here, so, but, okay.
So if you thought about that, Ralph, I could actually put a garage on the left and expand my garage and put an apartment above it.
Yes.
Mike?
Okay, um, so the next one is uh four fifty five point one one D five, um, which is the stairways uh not to access secondary. Who's, yes, my question is, that was highlighted in the um last go around by the attorney, and he said he had concerns over this, and I thought the consensus of the board was, hey, if the attorney feels that uh this is unreasonable, that we should remove it. I think um stairways, right now, we allow them. And I mean, if you have access to a second floor of your house through an outside stairway, how can we now say, well, if that goes to an ADU, no, you can't. I think it's burdensome. Um, I don't think most people are going to do that.
There's always going to be one or two outliers. Um, there's always going to be one or two outliers.
But again, I know our attorney suggested that that not be in there, and so that's why I've marked it.
Rob, you have an update?
So basically, our attorney flagged that one because uh they were unsure if that one would be seen as overly restrictive, and mind you, their comments came before the draft regulations were published. They just told us to be cautious of that one, just in case. But you do bring up a good point that if it's already allowed for single family homes that exist in town, then I would say probably wise to take it out of this section. Because that could be challengeable.
So I'm going to give you my thoughts. Um, let them challenge it. I I mean, we're trying to also have a certain aesthetic in town, even though maybe not every member of the town council cares about appearances. There are people that do.
It is cold out.
Um, you know, you, the better appearance of a property, the property is valued more. Where does a town get their tax dollars? From property values. The higher the property value, the more taxes. So there's nothing wrong with trying to uh reach for the stars a little bit. So my thoughts only as one person, so.
That's why I'm bringing these up for you. Um, number three is uh uh five eleven D thirteen. Um, again, uh, the accessory dwelling unit shall be designed so that the appearance and scale of the ADU is compatible with the primary dwelling. Um, again, this is one that our attorney had flagged. Um, and again, this one is um is compatible with the primary dwelling. So who's going to make the decision whether or not that looks good based on that? Or are you going to make them use the same siding? Um, even though the accessory structure that's right next to it is completely different. Um, I I mean, there's literally right now, your accessory structure is not required to, you know, complement your building. And it's a detached dwelling. I mean, obviously, an attached ADU, most people are going to match it with the house, and you're never even going to see it. I think this is more the detached, and it just didn't make a lot of sense to me that, hey, we're going to let your detached garage be anything you want, but jeez, if you have this accessory dwelling unit, it's got to be complimentary. That's why I suggested that. Um, and again, having it flagged by our attorney. Um, more food for thought.
That's.
This is one I actually agree with you on, Ralph.
What?
So.
Because because of how discretionary it is, so.
Mr. Chair, can we, um, I guess after we're done, can we just go back through the changes we want to make after? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do da, do da. Okay, the next one is uh five one one D uh fifteen C, um, which is detached ADU shall be constructed in the side and or rear yards. Um, again, under the guidance from the state, uh dimensional standards, any requirement concerning dimensional setbacks, lot size, lot coverage, open space, bulk and height of the structures that are more restrictive than what is for a single family home shouldn't be done. It's considered unreasonable. Um, so my suggestion would be to just adjust the language to, and again, I'm going to put in detached, and we'll get into that in a second. Detached ADUs shall meet all primary building setback requirements for the district in which it is located. It's simple, it's precise, we already have setbacks for each district, for the primary building. Um, keep it within the building envelope, and we're done. Um, that's my thought on it. Again, I think that was the way the board was sort of leaning. I think this language uh works very well.
Thoughts?
I think it's very clean.
Thank you.
Yep.
Another one we agree with it, don't get too excited.
Yes.
Um. Again, uh, the next one is five eleven D fifteen D. Um, the only reason I mentioned this is because it had been flagged by our attorney, and again, I just wanted to bring it up. Um, this has to do with the DPW curb cut regulations. So I don't see an issue with it, but.
Tom, you raised, uh, when we had a discussion last time, there were questions.
If you have a single family dwelling, you have to cut the curb and pave back fifteen feet on the primary residence, why wouldn't you do that on the secondary?
Hmm.
Maybe because they're parking in the same driveway?
No. But it's not more restrictive, so it's, it was flagged by the attorney, but not necessarily.
I think it must be.
So you're saying because it's required by the original structure?
Yeah. It's the same, it's the same regulation we put on the primary structure, so we can put it on the secondary.
Since it's the secondary, it's a conform to the primary structures, setbacks and all that type of stuff.
Right.
I agree.
Consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So detached ADUs requiring a separate curb cut? That makes it sound like if you have a detached ADU, you have to do a curb cut in a separate driveway, and I don't think that's really.
Not necessarily. I mean, it it's just specific to detached ADUs that might require a separate curb cut, but we can always modify that.
Require, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we make some, change the language?
Right.
So make it, you know, as.
I'll just do it right now.
Or if if applicable.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Detached ADUs that may require.
Yeah.
A separate curb cut.
There we go.
Okay.
Um. Next one is uh number E. A detached ADU shall be limited in height to one and a half stories. How tall is one and a half stories as a dimensional regulation?
Twelve feet.
You're going to put a house up twelve feet? So one and a half stories is more, the one and a half stories is basically a design. What it basically talks about is.
Pitch roof.
Well, when you talk about it, it means that the second floor is half the size of the first floor, which, when you look under the seven sixty CMR, you can't be more restrictive in dimensional requirements than what the primary structure is. Nowhere in our bylaw does it say. Nowhere in our bylaw does it say a house has to be one and a half stories. It says a residential dwelling can't be more than, say, thirty-five feet, I believe is what most zones are. It would be my suggestion that, that language be removed.
Or.
Set a height requirement. I mean, uh, put in.
Shall not exceed. You know, you know, which helped me the.
Will shall conform to the height requirements within that district.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's same section, um, five point one E, one through three, which is the review process. This is where I have concerns. Site plan review. I a hundred percent agree with site plan review for detached ADUs. Going to be putting them on a lot. I think the board, the town wants to know where they're going to be located within the building envelope, how the utilities are being hooked up and stuff like that. For attached ADUs, it's nothing more than addition on a house at best. We don't require site plan for that right now. To make someone pay additional funding and all to do a site plan for basically an addition on their house, I think is over the top. I think your building code really covers all aspects of an attached ADU. They have to meet the standards. They have to meet the setbacks from the property lines already to get the building permit. I can understand that we have to do a registry, um, based on what the state is suggesting that we do. And to make them, before they get an occupancy permit, that they have to register with the town. Absolutely. I don't have an issue with that. But to make a site plan review for an attached ADU, I, I disagree with it.
Thoughts? Before I gave you mine?
Well, I mean, just to keep in mind, for the site planner view process, you're allowed to submit a waiver request for any requirements of the site plan. So if it was just a very simple plan that showed the addition and then maybe not the stormwater report or the traffic study. You know, I think that'd be totally acceptable. You could just submit a waiver request with the application. Makes it easier, but you know, I'm open to suggestions for changing that if that's the board wants.
So I remember this discussion from the last time. So, uh, let's say we have a, uh, a ranch and they want to put on an attached unit and the attached unit abuts or kind of goes out toward the street. So essentially you've got an I that becomes an L. And the L goes out toward the streets, changes the entire character of the town, even if it meets the, you know, front setback. Looks absolutely atrocious. And I think I told you that I would like to be able to, if I'm on this board, I would like to be able to look at that individual and say, you really want to do this to your neighbor? It's another appearance issue. If it was to be to the, to go to the rear of the property, I, I wouldn't have a specific issue, but if they just needed to put it in front because they wanted to make some money to be able to kind of do this, it really looks terrible. And I think I'm, I, I would be opposed to it, but you know, I'm only one person.
I agree with you. It's discretionary.
It is discretionary. Yeah.
With that, if it's allowed, allowed by right, just like an addition, I think what you're basically sitting there saying is, I want this applicant to spend the fifteen hundred dollars to have the plans and all drawn. So I can tell them I don't think it's right. And I don't think that's right.
I would prefer that they go talk to the planning department before and say, you know, the planning board really would be interested in this, maybe going to the rear of the property rather than to the front of the property. Considering the visible, you know, the, the, the rest of the neighborhood goes out this far. And then all of a sudden you're going to have a twenty-foot addition to the front of the property, changing the entire appearance of the street.
Are we going to do that with all additions?
None if it goes to the rear or to the side.
All additions. In other words, someone wants to put a, a family room off at the front of their house. Are we gonna, are we gonna?
I think it's discretionary.
So then we need to change our bylaw to remove single-family housing exemptions from site plan review and say, yeah, you know what, I gotta do a site plan review on everything. That's my thought.
Rob. So we already require some sort of rough sketch or plot plan of additions to the building permit process. So we can make sure the addition still complies with the setback requirements. It's not going to be, it doesn't have to be a fully detailed stamped plan, but just whatever complies with the site plan of your requirements. And you can make the argument that because it's just an addition, this is only a permitting set just to show to the board. I mean, most of the times when people come in for the special permit, they only show us permitted sets anyways, which usually is just probably the first fifty percent of the plan before they do the construction set. So it doesn't really need to be the final product for this process. But usually when you get to the building permit, that's when they're going to want to know, do you comply with setbacks? Are you within the appropriate lot, uh, coverage percentage? It just really, it could be done on a case-by-case basis. It's, it's not like every single person has to do these fully detailed plans. There, there is flexibility there within the site plan review requirements.
So the requirements in here state that you have to meet the requirements of all site plan.
Which also has a requirement that you're allowed to apply for waivers from those requirements. So that's, we're trying to make it flexible for people, but we want to make sure that the full purview of site plan review is still thrown over all these ADUs. But there are exceptions that people can request from the planning board whenever, whenever they're appropriate.
So the other question I have for you, Rob, so maybe Mike Carabatta could weigh in on this. I mean, you do subdivisions and you have, I don't know if you have restrictions on, you know, um, you know, what you can do to the properties.
As long as you're within the building envelope, you're entitled to do whatever the town owns.
But if you then add a attached ADU to it, changing the envelope. And so aren't there subdivisions that have restrictions on what, you know, where?
Square footage.
Square footage additions can be added and so forth. And, you know, can they exceed the, um, you know, you build a, all your houses are built back thirty feet from the, from the, uh, from the street. And all of a sudden someone says, well, I'm going to put an ADU and now, you know, I'm just going to go up to, you know, the, uh, the front setback line. And it changes, and it changes the entire, you know, view of the street.
So if you have a, a lot, you're, and you have a building envelope on that lot. So when, if someone comes before you with a subdivision, all those building envelopes are on the land and or lots as presented to you. So if you would have a house that's fifty feet wide and you want to add twenty feet to it and come forward two feet and you have that room in your building envelope, you would be allowed to do it. So there will be nothing, at least in the subdivisions, I've done, I've never put any restrictions on like that. What other developers have done, I don't know. If you're within that building envelope, you would be allowed to do pretty much whatever you want. As far as construction.
As long as you don't, uh.
As long as you don't exceed that envelope.
Yeah. A lot of coverage and so forth.
You're talking about like the, the box that shows the house on the plans. Yeah.
No two lots are the same. Somebody's got five acres or building envelope is huge.
Yeah.
Somebody's got ten thousand square feet, but building envelope is considerably smaller. As long as you're within that building envelope, you're safe. As long as you exceed that. And obviously the building inspector is not going to grant the permit for anything that exceeds that building envelope.
And also just for proof of thought, so currently our site plan review requires that if the building, say it's a non-residential building, right? It's a commercial building, exceeds a certain percentage outside the existing envelope. That requires site plan review. I believe if it's greater than twenty-five percent, that's when you need actual site plan review. So the attached ADU can also be seen as an extension beyond the original envelope of the single-family home. Because you're adding a certain square foot, you can add up to nine hundred square feet. Um, that's pretty big. So I, I don't see why, I, I don't think it, it would, it makes sense to, to consider site plan review. Unless the board feels like that's too restrictive, but I, I think it fits within that same purview. It's just the only difference is we don't allow for that for single-family homes at the moment. But if we did do that, that would make pretty much the board have fifty applications every meeting. So that's something else to keep in mind too.
So through the chair, again, my thought process is for an addition, you don't, uh, you don't require site plan review, but internally, when they come for the building and all, I mean, there's nothing against the planning director and the building commissioner looking and going, you sure you want to stick that forwards? It's really going to look bad on the street. Have, have you considered going backwards with it? Which is basically what you as a board would want to be doing. Um, that's my thought. Anyways, I, I'll let you guys think on that. Because I don't want to be here all night and neither do you. Um, so I'm going to jump, uh, next to, uh, four fifty nine point three, which is, I believe, uh, page seven, uh, number A. So on A two, uh, the construction or exterior expansion of any structure or building, with the exception of single-family residential dwellings are. So in other words, single-family residential dwelling doesn't need a site plan review. So if we keep it for accessory dwelling units, I think A two, the language may need to be adjusted a little bit. Um, maybe it says, uh, uh, with the exception of primary, single-family residential dwelling or something on that idea. Because right now it sounds like any exterior expansion on a single-family dwelling is exempt from site plan review. Um, so when you drop down to number eight, which is, uh, an addition, uh, for accessory dwelling units under site plan review, my suggestion would be that number eight re-detached accessory dwelling units require site plan review. And again, that all depends on your feeling on site plan review. So, um, moving forwards, um, two definitions. Gross floor area. I do not agree with the definition that the state is looking to submit. Don't think sellers should be included. They're not livable areas. Um, I think the original definition, which is also the definition in our zoning bylaw, is more accurate. I do know they're going through the question period. I had called the state and they said one of the largest areas that, that got comments on was gross floor area, which is to be expected because if you Google it, it seems, and it pretty much says every municipality has a different definition. I would like to see it switched back to the original. And down the road, once the definitions are all defined and all, if we have to make an adjustment to it, then we can. But I, I really don't think, a, a seller is not a living space. It, when, when you calculate the square foot gross floor area of your.
Those date.
It's not included in it. Um.
Plus, there's so many requirements for, uh, uh, access and egress in the down, the downstairs.
Exactly.
I built the house, I had to walk out with the downstairs, uh, and had the certain sized windows that a person can access easily. So there's a lot of requirements. So I would, I, I agree, it shouldn't be mounted.
And I'm assuming the first writing was basically you took the gross floor area out of our existing zoning bylaw. And then you probably saw the updated one under seven sixty and went, well, if they're requiring that language, um, but if we're going to go up on some of the other stuff, I'd like to push it on that.
Well, the only thing, um, I mean, it's such a off route. The only, uh, concern I had, I agree with you. I think sellers are not living areas. But, you know, there was a recent bill passed, um, it was like some sort of economic development. I forgot the exact name of it. But essentially it allows for the courts to no longer hold the bylaw and way terms are defined within the zoning bylaw as chief. In a land course case, they now have to go with the state's definition. So if that's going to be the state's definition, that creates a problem for us because if this were to get challenged for some reason, they're going to go straight to that definition in the court. So I think we gotta just wait and see what they do. But maybe we can also modify this definition to take out sellers and maybe change it from basements to finished basements or something like that.
I mean, my concern, I'm going to use my house and as, as an example, I consider my house based on the town's taxes, eleven hundred and eighty square feet. So if you take half of that, what's that? Just under six hundred square feet. I could have for an ADU. That would probably fit my house. If I had the basement to it, I can up that to nine hundred square feet, which is almost the size of my house. So it would look like I had two houses on the same property. And if I did the second house, one story, it would actually look bigger than what I have. And I don't think that's really the intent. And that was my thought on it. Like I said, it.
Final comments are due on the tenth.
Yep.
Yes. Public comments, yes.
Public hearings also on the tenth as well for, for the draft regulations.
Okay. And yet they want us to pass this by February second.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they want us to pass something and then modify accordingly.
We also had this, this discussion last time, we were all here, that.
Once you start.
We are in the process. We're fine.
Yeah.
Was that correct? That was the final conclusion?
In regards to vest of rights.
As I could get our attorney to be.
Okay. So after we discuss all of this, we still really have the capability of continuing this for another two weeks to see if the final regs have come out.
They're not going to get them before then.
I, I know. I know. So I, I don't see.
Six to nine months.
I don't see the urgency then, because we would incorporate some of the regulations within anything that we do here. So we do, quite honestly, because we've already started the process, we've made a good faith effort to hold public hearings on this that we could actually put it, not push it down the road, but put it off until we actually, um, get further direction from the regulations.
Most likely.
Thank you. Again?
I'm not sure on that, but, um, so based on.
Well.
Based on what I.
As you know, I do a lot of work for the Affordable Care Act.
Yes.
That is now ten years old. There are regulations that are still in draft form and have never been implemented.
And so I will guarantee you this, it's not going to allow us to go ten years without allowing an ADU.
Also can look at this a few more months down the road too. They're not going to have it done.
Okay. But this is a great process. So keep going.
And so my last two basically were the notes under the, um, table and that, if you adopt what I said up above, especially with regards to one and a half stories, then that note's not necessary. Same with the other one.
Thank you for taking the time to do this.
Yeah. It's cold out today.
Sure you did.
I just want everyone, just to, as a reminder, this is something that the town will have to pass in some form. And there's really nothing this planning board nor the town council that have that final day on it will be able to not do. And so in fifteen years, if you don't like the outcome of it, you can go back and that our local legislative delegation who voted in favor of this law. So Representative Pupolo, Representative Ash and State Senator Olivera, who all voted to pass this. So, uh, we'll go from there. So.
So one parting comment is, I believe the town council was hoping to do a first reading of this at next Tuesday's meeting. Not that I'm putting pressure on you, but I'm, and I think we were thinking that because we have a first reading, then it goes to a subcommittee within the two-week timeframe. And then on the twenty-eighth, we were hoping to hold our public hearing. And by then, pretty much anything and everything should be ironed out and it should, whatever we get to at that point should go right through. So.
So, well, don't go. So that question becomes again on timing and how quickly we want to act on this, given that final comments are not due to the state until Friday. They're going to hold a peer, a hearing on it Friday.
And who knows if that will get continued.
Excuse me?
So who knows if that, that will get continued.
Oh, yeah. Because I would like to take what Mr. Page provided to us, go back, see how it fits into our current draft on things. See what, you know, um, our town attorney might want to take a peek at these as well and see if they would make any changes that he would feel uncomfortable with. Um, so what's the pleasure of, of this board?
Yeah, well, there are people too that.
I, I, yeah, I know. I'm just trying to find on, on, on process. But we will be taking additional testimony. I don't need to answer that right now.
I do have a question for the chair. Um, so I guess, are there any changes that you want to make to? So I guess, are there any changes that you want to make tonight from this list that I can document? So I can make those changes accordingly for the next hearing date?
Well, I was trying to keep track of it.
So far, it seems like. Correcting, I think it was four fifty point eleven D, which talks about the.
The stairs.
The outside stairs, did you want to get rid of that altogether? It seemed like the board wanted that to to be the case.
Yes.
So I believe it was for. And then also, Dobby Designs said the appearance and scale of the ADU is compatible with the primary dwelling. To be strict as well. Okay.
I thought, I thought we were good with three. I thought we were good with four.
So I think four was just to make the change for the setbacks.
Yeah.
And five, adding that may require for the separate curb code.
Yeah.
Was there anything else after that? I guess modifying gross floor area to take out non-living spaces, so I can write that down. And then the two notes.
Eleven and twelve.
Wait, was that for the use table, Ralph, or was that for the dimensional table? I was confused by.
By people.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah. Okay. So just take out those two notes. Well, yeah, take out those two notes from what it sounds like is the right move. Okay, we can do that.
Are we all pretty much in agreeance for those?
Yeah.
Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Mr. Carabatta. My best to your father. Long time.
My care, but I live 202 Allen Street. I looked at the bylaw, I don't really have a problem with, I think Ralph covered everything that I would have covered. I think I want to leave you with a thought, though. I've gotten a couple of phone calls from people that have. Accessory structures, i.e. two car garages within a five foot setback. They want to know if they can put apartments above. Here tonight, that's not going to be possible. So that says if they have to build an ADU, they have to build it within their primary setbacks.
Correct.
After listening to Russ, we're talking about property values, what it's going to look like aesthetically detrimental to the neighborhood. So now, in theory, you could have three structures on a property because you can't use the garage as an ADU. So I don't know if that's something you want to consider. I don't know if you want to look at maybe doing special permits or stuff that already exists. I think three buildings on a property could be too much in, say, a C zone. But it is possible, it is plausible. So I just want to leave that with you guys to contemplate.
Good thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good.
Chair, cut out onto that?
Yeah.
So when you think about it, too, if it is being attached to an existing garage, it's within the five foot setback and it's a fifteen or twenty foot setback area for a single family. I mean, we would look at where the addition to that garage starts and how far it is from the property line. So technically, the AD wouldn't be five feet away from the property line on the side. It would just be the two car garage, then the AD on the side.
It would be somebody wanting to go up. So the walls aren't even there, you got foundation, you got the walls, they're basically taking a roof off, second floor on.
In that case, that would complicate it further, so.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be more desirable than having a third building?
Yeah.
It would be.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Aesthetically, I think it would be.
Crowding on the property.
Right.
That would also negate.
Trying to avoid the crowding on the property.
Great, that's why.
Then that would do it.
And that would do it.
I want to do one thing.
Yeah.
In my.
I agree.
You know, maybe, maybe five foot is not the rule or so. Two buildings, I think is going to be less detrimental than three.
I agree.
Yeah.
This bylaws can get passed, you're looking at the possibility of three buildings. And in a red doorway, you could have three massive buildings on one line. So again, I know you're talking about aesthetics, you're talking about property. Yeah, I want you to spoof for thought, I'd like you to think about it.
So, so how do we accomplish that, then?
It'll look something.
See what AI says. That's right. What do you think, Ralph?
Yeah.
There is, and also you could make the argument that because the shed is pre-existing, not conforming, that you can get. The garage is pre-existing, not conforming, get special permit from the playing board. It's approved, it's not more detrimental to the area. If you were to put that second story on there. If it's. Yes, so you create the non-conformity by putting the AT. But if you make the argument that by putting the AD on top, through special permit process, that's not going to be more detrimental. I mean, the bylaw already has an avenue for that to go down for these non-conforming structures. That's just something else to keep in mind, too. But again, that's a case by case storage situation.
Let's take it one step further.
Yeah.
So I threw this question to Rob over the weekend, so. Does the state legislation limit the number of accessory dwelling units that can be on one parcel? Because then it becomes a subdivision, almost.
I would agree with you, but.
And so.
A garage is not an AD.
If you're adding.
If you're adding.
Correct, I agree, but.
Yeah.
If you're going up, you're only adding one ADU.
Correct.
So if you have. But then someone gets greedy and then.
Say, yeah. And they get through all of them.
Yeah. And I don't mean that in a negative way, saying someone must get greedy, but in a.
Oh, but that's plausible.
But I'm thinking of appearances again.
Correct.
You know?
Correct. Yeah, so I.
So they only allow one.
Yeah. By right.
By right.
By right.
By right.
By right.
By right.
After that, it would be on a town by town basis under a special.
Correct, yeah.
And our attorneys filed this leaving that language for the special permit out of the bylaw.
Yeah.
Apparently with this, our town would only allow one.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that kind of takes care of that problem.
Yeah, it does take care of it.
Okay. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Please step forward.
Hi. Greg Thompson, Porter Road. I just wanted to speak for those people that are actually interested in having ADUs in this town. I think it's an opportunity for a lot of folks economically to create another rental income, which is a real thing. It's an opportunity to have younger family members live on your property, but outside of your house or older family members. And so I want us to not lose sight of what the intention of this, you know, the legislature is, the governor passes for a reason to increase housing stock, we're low on housing stock. So I just wanted to propose, I know we're talking the primary envelope and there's exceptions perhaps to the primary envelope, but perhaps we could consider accessory setbacks. Because I believe in the people of East Almeno that will want to do best for this town. And in my instance, the property that I own on Porter Road, if you force the, if I was to build an ADU on that with the primary envelope, it would actually put it much closer to my neighbors than it would if I was allowed to put it way back in the accessory envelope, five feet from my property line way back. And so if the goal is to keep it further from the neighbors, perhaps we could consider perhaps twice the side lot requirements from an existing primary residence. So you have to be twice, you know, twenty feet times two for the ADU. But it could fit within that side lot over the five foot setback because it gives the building envelope, that box you were talking about, is so much bigger if you widen it to the accessory envelope. So I throw that out there because, again, in my situation, it would, if I do a detach, it would be right outside the kitchen window. If I'm allowed to do it outside the primary envelope, it's way, you know, it's fifty feet back in the corner, not near any other houses. So just keep that in mind as we think of that because there is opportunity. Also, as we think about smaller lots in this town, certainly the big lots will be able to comply with the primary envelope. But the smaller lots will have trouble fitting within that envelope. So we'll be restricting people in their ability to create wealth for themselves or to do what they want on their own particular property. So, you know, we can talk about fencing, we can talk about setbacks, but just if we can start to consider that. And I also would say that in commercial, there are a lot of houses that are pre-existing in commercial to say to those people and it looks just like residential streets, you know, mostly on this end of town. To say that those folks can't do ADUs at all, you know, I think if we meet the twenty five percent maximum lot lot coverage requirement, right, still meet that, then you should be allowed to do an ADU potentially because this is an opportunity for all of us as residents. Because my house happens to be in a commercial residence, it's a residential neighborhood. There's other houses around it, I don't know if we should restrict that, so I just want to throw that out there. The one other thing I wanted to bring up was the. The plumbing issue in terms of tying into the primary house. Currently, we're allowed, if you have a garage and you put a bathroom in the garage, you're allowed to tie it in with the house, I believe. So in some circumstances, it may make way more sense to tie into the existing house if we can address the meter, meter issue than it would to run plumbing sewer specifically all the way out to the street. So I know we're restricting it, but perhaps we could reconsider that because if there's no detriment, then why not tie into the house if it makes way more sense than cutting into the road again? Because it would require the road to be cut and go all the way out to the street versus right to the house, which would be closer, so. Couple of thoughts. Exciting, I'm interested in creating more housing for this town, we're out of lots in this town. I think this combined with the center of town district gives us some opportunity, but I would like to have the opportunity for as many residents as we can and not restrict it. I believe in the people of East Almeno, I believe they'll put up nice structures. If you live in a house, you don't want something junky in your lot, you don't want rowdy neighbors. And so that's the best we can do. Yes, I'm not naive, that some houses will be double rentals. That's a real thing. But that happens now, we have a rental on one house and a rental next door, and so it's not that much difference. So I know it increases density, but that's the only way we're going to get more housing in this town is to increase density, so. Thank you for your time on this.
Appreciate it.
Chair, do you mind if I speak one thing on that, Matt? So brings up a good concern about the rez C and how those lots are pretty small. A lot of those houses might exceed. They might be considered non-conforming structures because they may not abide by all the setbacks because the regulations were enacted after they were constructed. But to go around that, you could just do a non-conforming special permit for an ADU in that situation and prove that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood by putting this there. You could use that as an avenue to get something like that permitted. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of workaround.
I think that's a hurdle, though, for those people, especially on this side of town that have small lots, small lots, less expensive house. As long as we don't allow for more than the twenty five percent lot coverage, they're allowed to build whatever they want now. Anyway, it's the same issue you have in other districts. So to say that they're restricted just because, you know, they have a C in their zoning versus an A or B or C, C as in commercial. Just a thought. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? So I don't, so I think the process. And. Hopefully you can speak for the town council, Mr. Page. So you have a hearing next week. So if we were to vote on a draft.
So where you're going to be voting on, Mr. Chair, is your, the board's recommendations to go to the town council. So what we did tonight is that we took a document that was submitted to you, that the town council also received.
Okay.
That same original document. We made changes to it during this public hearing process, which I'm going to include the changes that we've discussed from this.
Okay.
These are your recommendations as planning board to go to the town council for their consideration. So that's what you'd be voting on tonight, and that would essentially close the public hearing as well.
That makes sense.
Want to close it?
I think we have to close it. Timeline, gotta close it.
And we only got one meeting.
We only got one meeting, we have a second. Well, no, we had that discussion of.
We could open as long as possible.
Yeah.
All right.
But I would like to show my, show the board's good faith and willingness to work with the town council to, to meet their deadline or their hearing for next Tuesday. And try to show good faith to the states that we're moving forward. So I'm wondering how we can accomplish all of that and somehow still provide the flexibility to end up getting more data from the state after they've produced more. In respect to the regulations. Now, this is a, this would be a zoning ordinance. And we could certainly always make amendments to it.
That's, I was just going to say, if we make amendments and we hold public hearings, we get around it that way. Or not get around it, but continue, continue the discussion.
And continue, make changes as a.
Correct. I don't think this document isn't the final.
Right, right.
And, but we, and I agree with you, in a good faith, we need to submit something that we all agree upon to the council to keep the ball rolling.
Zoning is never concrete.
I know, I know that.
I'll be doing zoning amendments my entire employment here.
Yeah. And then, you know, and when this thing finally shakes out, which could be another year or so.
We can continue to.
We can continue to make changes as the state gives us guidance.
Yep. Okay, Pete.
Then that would close a public hearing, though.
On this.
On this, right.
On this one.
Because we're, we're here, we've got this, where if we agree on this.
Recommend it.
We're going to recommend this to the council.
Right.
As changes come through.
We can act on those.
Amendments, then you, the process starts over.
As long as we have the, the ability to, you know, look at and revise our.
By doing it this way, we can't. By doing it this way, we can't.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So through the chair. If you choose to make some adjustments and take a vote on it and submit it to the council. Our next Tuesday meeting is what's considered the first reading. It's out for two weeks later that the council would hold the public hearing and actually may, may adjust what we see from you. So if in that timeframe, something else that comes in, the council would be more than open to, you know, a letter from the chair that said, you know what, after we closed the public hearing and after we voted on this, this came up and we'd like you to consider it.
So would, would it traditionally go to your planning subcommittee?
It is mandated to go to the planning matter sub.
So you'll hold a hearing next Tuesday and then it immediately goes.
Those two weeks, planning matter subcommittee will meet and make their recommendations.
Maybe you could make us aware of when that committee meets.
I would be happy.
I will do everything in my power to attend. If not, our vice chair could attend to give the committee the flavor of what the planning board has to say so that. There's an understanding of the minds.
I will make sure that the date and the agenda is forwarded typically, Rob, I believe you received the notice of it.
I also go to all the meetings, too. So if you guys want to pass any notes, you can definitely give me a note.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the matter, anybody from Zoom? Don't see anybody. What's the pleasure of the planning board? Yeah, I don't know whether you want to.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on closing a public hearing?
I don't like it, but, but we do have another avenue.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Don't want to oppose, so we close the public hearing. On, let's, so the, on the document or on the.
Draft.
Draft as submitted with amendments, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, hearing done? Okay, so this matter passes. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
I think any old business, hearing done, other business, redevelopment report?
Let me just pull that up real quick, Mr. Chair. I'll go through it briefly, y'all can have that in your packet as well. Like usual, I put up the next meeting dates just so you can have that in your calendar, a pretty regular schedule. We have no upcoming public hearings before the planning board for the. There's upcoming events, I did attend one of the CPTC trainings yesterday, it was for site plan review. Just a few takeaways I wanted to briefly mention to the board that I learned. So it mentioned that site plan review is a tool to share information and determine compliance, not used to shape development or deny use. So typically, that's how the courts treat site plan review. So that's just something to keep in mind moving forward, whenever we have another petition come before us. Also, they gave us good advice on how site plan review can be acted three ways. You can deny it if all their required information is not provided to us. So if they're not giving us a traffic study, we can deny the site plan review because they failed to give us a traffic study. If they didn't request a waiver, that is.
Okay.
We can approve it with reasonable conditions if needed and then deny if no reasonable conditions can satisfy the problems of the plan. The biggest caveat with that one, I wouldn't say caveat, downside is that the courts never really upheld this third decision before. And they usually tend to side with the applicants. So you, as a board, could do it, but just keep in mind it's susceptible to challenge.
But yeah, if they're going to side with the applicants, we're going to, it's a slippery slope.
It's a slippery slope.
So.
And then there's two more coming up that I'm going to attend on your behalf and give you updates on. So next one, special permits and variances, which is tomorrow, then writing reasonable and defensible decisions, which is next Monday. On the second page.
Robert, these all, like, these are virtual, you're not going in first.
Yeah, they're over Zoom. And they also have recordings and I look at little slides they send to, and I could send the slides to you guys if you want. Yeah, they're over Zoom. And they also have recordings and I look at little slides they send too. And I could send the slides to you guys if you want them.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Let me, uh, send forward. All right, uh, we'll do that tomorrow. All right. So the two public hearings that we have before town council, the A D U for them is going to be next Tuesday, which is the fourteenth of January. And then the solar bylaw amendments was continued to January twenty eighth of twenty twenty five. The reason for that is because the sub, the planning matter subcommittee needed more time to discuss their revisions.
Okay.
So that was continued further. And then lastly, um, I did submit comments to the executive office of housing liberal communities on their draft A D regulations. As I mentioned, I will also be attending virtually the January tenth, uh, public hearing, which I'm still waiting for a Zoom invite for. So hopefully they actually let me go in.
Not on Friday. That's a real surprise.
I know, ten AM.
Oh, ten AM. It's not three o'clock.
So that's all I have for my report. And I believe, uh, we have-
I have one item. So, um, I'm going to ask each member of this board that if you are aware of any meetings over the course of the remainder of this year.
Any one?
Any meetings?
Okay.
That you will be unable to attend either physically or virtually, that you try to get those dates to Rob.
Okay.
As soon as possible, so that it makes it easier for him to schedule hearings where we have a full quarrel. So I, I already told him I'm going to miss a meeting in May. I'm going to miss one in October. The May is a maybe virtual, uh, second one, I'm on the Isle of Skye. I don't think I'll be able to, uh, call in.
I wouldn't worry about it.
From the Isle of Skye.
Yeah. September is usually a tough month for me.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll talk to Rob, so.
Yeah. So if you could do that, that would be, we appreciate it.
Traditionally, that's just-
Yeah.
A tough month.
So we need a motion to, can you, Rob, read that to go into executive session?
Yeah. Uh, executive session under M G L chapter thirty A, section twenty one, A three. For the following purposes, discuss strategy with respect to the pending litigation, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC versus Town of East Almetto. Land court cases number twenty three M I C, M I S dash zero, 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 three, three, six regarding the planning board denial of the plaintiff's site plan application. If the chair declares this is an open, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the, to, on the boards or towns litigation. Is this?
Which I so declare. Russ?
Yes.
I'll be gone all of March.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
So the, the open meeting is concluded. We're just going to execute sessions.
So move to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine.